Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Plan, Common Council, to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I did the same thing at Plan Commission last week. I did the Common Council. If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenek. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Tomgrotty. Alderman Tedgrotty. Alderman Repella. All are present.
First item on the agenda this evening is the Report of Department Officers, Staff, and Consultants. We do have the Manassas VFW here this evening to present a donation to the Police K-9 Unit. Would you want to come up front?
I'm Dave Mixon. I got Jim Hoym with me. And we're with the Nina Manassas Veterans Honor Guard. What this is, is we're going to be giving a donation. And what it is, is our branch does funerals and stuff like that. And we get a little kitty together. And we're taking into our kitties to help the K-9 Unit tonight. So we're going to give a check to the K-9 Unit of $500 to help pay for his, all the work that he has to go through in supplies. So out of Nina Manassas Veterans Honor Guard.
Thank you. Appreciate it. She wants to check. Be good dinner. Thanks much, Dave. As we were talking about, and just a reminder to the council as well as members of the public, the operating costs of the K-9 Unit are actually through donations. And it costs about $2,000 a year between vet bills and equipment and food for Kami. That it's, this is about 25% of our operating budget on an annual basis. So very fortunate to have friends and community support for the program itself, which certainly helps us out. And Kami and her partner Joel are just phenomenal for, for the department and for the city. We could go on and on about some of the fines and the things that Kami's done, but she certainly makes our community a safer place by, by having her on duty with us here. So certainly thank you to Dave and Jim for coming tonight and your donation to the program. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was driving down Racine Street, it was a little bumpy ride, but I made it. Liked at this time to make a motion that we receive Minutes 1 through 9 and Communications 10 through 12.
So motion is second. Discussion. Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I see in the Park and Rec Minutes that there was a pickleball game with the First Lady of Wisconsin and our legislative representative and the mayor, but I don't see any score on here. Was there a score?
The First Lady whooped all of us. She's an amazing pickleball player.
And Megan, with the fall sports program, I see that all the, everything you have listed there is up 50%, 137%. And I wonder if, and that's probably to the numbers of last year, but I wonder how they compare to 2019 or 2018, I think would be a better, better way to look at those numbers.
Sam, would you mind sharing the mic?
And then, what is the, we're going to submit a neighborhood investment grant in early November. What is that grant?
So back to your question about the fall sporting program. So we do hope to work on, in this coming year, an annual report that would give a more cumulative snapshot from previous years. So we understand that 2020 maybe isn't the most relative year to look at, but we certainly, you know, take your suggestion and plan to kind of offer some of that data in the future. So you can look for that in the future. And then the neighborhood investment grant regarding Lawson Canal. So that is a grant opportunity that's come forth. We have another meeting on it tomorrow in which I can then provide some more details, but we hope to submit that here in the coming future. So I'll have some more details after our meeting tomorrow.
Okay. And I see there's been vandalism at Smith Park. And I know the people of Doughty Island, they, they really seem to take an interest in, in their parks and property over there. And I'm wondering, did we work with the police department on this? And did we maybe set up a neighborhood watch or let the people on Park Street and, and what's the other street? Cleveland Street. Did we get them involved? And, and did we add any lighting to the area or anything?
So some of the things that have happened over the summer have been pretty minor incidents, but I did speak to a couple of the neighbors. There was a, I worked with Chief Stike to put a little notice in their monthly, or their quarterly newsletter that goes out to Doughty Island, if they are witnessing anything, who they should contact. So if we would see an uptick or more severe vandalism, we would certainly enhance whatever measures we would take. But right now, what we're seeing, it's pretty minor vandalism, but we still want it to be brought to the attention of the neighbors. So some of those efforts have been taken.
And with the growing season probably coming to an end last night or tonight, just an outstanding job by your staff with the Smith Park Gardens, who just over the top this year. And just a great job if you pass that on to your staff.
I certainly will. You are not the only one to compliment it. It has been a banner year at Smith Park. They were very beautiful this year.
Thank you.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. So this one for Megan. I, I read, well, about, I don't know, five years ago maybe already, when we redid the infield at Coslow, the whole infield, put underground sprinkling on the infield. We also put drain tile in the ground also on both sides of the dugout heading out. I'm wondering where you're putting drain tile in.
So the drain tile's going in the outfield to increase the irrigation out there. So it's not in the infield, it's in the outfield to improve that drainage out there.
Okay. Thank you.
She was talking about meeting tomorrow. What meeting is that?
For the Lawson Canal.
Oh, you have a meeting for the Lawson?
Just with our consultants.
Gotcha.
That's what that is related to.
I thought maybe, I'm looking at this.
No. No, it's not a public meeting, just internal.
Thank you, Mayor. A thank you to Director Sackett and whomever else is involved in writing the Park Board Minutes and providing the departmental update. Really appreciate the efforts to keep us engaged and informed about what's happening in, across the Parks Department. So thank you for that. Director Hutter.
Hello.
Hi. That's okay. Just a quick question about the COVID-19 situation. We have some news coming down the pike this week about pediatric vaccinations for five to 11-year-olds. And will the Health Department be providing vaccinations to that age group upon approval?
Yes. So tomorrow is the, the first day of the meeting with the CDC to get a recommendation potentially. And then, once they provide a recommendation, the director would ultimately, the director of the CDC would ultimately make a recommendation on behalf of the agency. And then the Wisconsin DHS would typically accept that recommendation. And then all of the updates that need to happen for our clinical guidance would be updated and published. And then we, as a vaccine agency, would be able to provide the vaccine. And we are planning to provide it. We'll be working with the Manassas Joint School District first and trying to provide the five to 11-year-olds an opportunity as soon as we are able to provide that.
As soon as you're able to, do you have an anticipated date in mind?
We are hoping that we'll be able to do it next week. Early next week. And it's, we're not really putting out the details right now because it hasn't received approval yet. And we don't actually have our vaccine yet. But we have ordered it and we're awaiting a shipment, so.
So where should people continue to look for information about that?
So like I said, we'll be working with the Manassas Joint School District first. So we will be sending out notification to the parents through the school for that clinic. It will not be published further than that for this one. But in the future, if we're able to open up to that age group at our regular clinics, it would be posted on our website and our Facebook page, kind of as is typical for us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a while since these council meetings have been televised on access cable channels. And the city of Nina has successfully worked with the Oshkosh, with, through spectrum, through the access channel, to have their meetings on Wednesday night, the week after their meetings. And I think there could be an opportunity here for us to move forward with that and maybe get our meetings on Monday night, the week after, before the crowded field of villages and other people get in front of us on that. So I would like this to remain under a report of officers and update each meeting till we see that through. I think it's a great opportunity and certainly with the cable franchising dollars, hopefully we can get this back on.
I don't believe it's on the agenda tonight, but we have started working with the City of Oshkosh and UW Fox to get that moving. I don't see it on here. Is it on here someplace I didn't see?
No, Mayor. It's not on the agenda, but I asked under report that it shows up in the future under report of officers. Thank you.
Seeing no more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Hello, Sandra Dable Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I primarily, I'm going to be talking about the comprehensive plan, which is on your agenda tonight, a resolution to approve. Just a quick note regarding televised council meetings. In your packet tonight, under the finances, there is a, an item that lists the amount of franchise fees received plus the state amount, which is, I think we, it was like 183,000 franchise fees and another 35 from the state. So that's over $200,000 the city receives every year. Those are franchise fees paid by subscribers, not taxpayer dollars. And that money should be geared toward televised council meetings. Okay. Comprehensive plan. Where do I begin? When it was last on, 10 years ago, I, along with other members of the community, worked tirelessly, really hard to, to come up with a plan where we focus not so much on affordable housing, but quality of housing, due to the fact of the high percentage of rental in the city and the lack of maintenance on many of those rental properties. From that, the Strong Neighborhoods Program pretty much developed, but it's not really focusing on those needs. What the city was faced with now 10 years is up, the city was faced with having to update that plan. Rather than doing a comprehensive plan of all the chapters, it focused on land use and transportation. It was also done during pretty much the time of COVID. So the public participation was extremely limited. There was one visioning session online. Three people were in attendance. There was an in-person session at the library, and I think about 15 people showed up for that. And then there was an online survey, and that was like 136. So this was not a comprehensive outreach to the community on what their opinions were and what they want to see in the future development. However, many of the comments from the questionnaire focused on the, the public's concern about the amount of rental, about industrial and commercial, abutting residential, trying to preserve the value and the quality of their neighborhood and not have it being infringed upon. Now, the existing future land use map, as it exists today, that was developed about 10 years ago, went deliberately and eliminated at least 80% of those spot-zoned, commercial, abutting residential properties. It doesn't mean they had to be removed, but it did mean in the case that the property became blighted or was destroyed, such as a fire, which we've seen in, in the city of Manassas, that that land would be reverted to residential, that it would not remain commercial or industrial. There was no hesitation when the Whiting Mill burnt down, that that was going to not remain industrial. Right away, it was going to be reverted to residential development. The same with the Bryn property. It was like, it, it was like no question. But yet, the proposed future land use map pretty much disregarded what is, what was done 10 years ago. And it put back in all these areas of spot zoning. Forest Street, Broad Street, Taco Street, everywhere you look. And it's these little pink things. So that means whatever's there now is going to stay there. And I have a problem with that. I would like the Common Council to hold this for a week and just review what the existing map looks like compared to what the proposed map looks like and see for yourself the amount of conflicts that exist. Because what is supposed to be done is that when someone, it comes to the Plan Commission, the decision of the Plan Commission, which is recommended to the council, is supposed to be based on this future land use map. Obviously, that's not happening. It didn't happen last week. The future land use map on Milwaukee Street designated residential, and you went and allowed commercial and industrial. So it's not going to prevent everything, but it gives protection to homeowners. When people buy a home and they assume it's a single-family residential neighborhood, they're not expecting a car lot across the street or something to develop that's going to depreciate their value, or an apartment complex. What else has happened with this new way of thinking is that what was once single-family residential or R2 or multifamily is now designated as density. So you have suburban density, and that is considered pretty much your low density. And that's Cali County, the east side of Doughty Island, Riverway, the tip of Brighton Drive, it's very select areas, and the north part of the city. And all the rest of it pretty much is urban density, meaning it can be higher density. So all the effort that we put in to try to convert duplexes back to single-family and all the, this work to improve neighborhoods, we can now go back and, because it's so vague, it's like anything goes. It proposes smaller lot sizes, smaller setbacks, allowing garages to be converted into housing units, allowing more parking on the street. I mean, like, we're looking at the city like it's Chicago. Future development in the downtown. If they put up an apartment building, they don't have to provide the parking. It's those things that may be appropriate in Madison or Minneapolis, Chicago, Milwaukee, but it's really not appropriate for Manassas when we are landlocked and we have to have the highest quality development, not just high-density development. My other issue is the transportation section, which primarily focuses on trails. I know the mayor is a huge proponent of trails, and I have no problem with trails. But I don't really see a big emphasis on Highway 47, which needs a trail really bad, or Oneida Street, which was supposed to have a trail when it was redone and the DOT dropped it. But I do surprisingly see a trail along Broad Street. And it's a paved trail. According to the map, it's a proposed off-street paved trail. We already have a sidewalk. Some of these, some of you don't even propose sidewalks in our neighborhoods. We have a sidewalk, and now they're going to either tear out the sidewalk and put in a trail, or put a trail next to the sidewalk, and it's not going to be on the road, which is really hypocritical. And then on top of it, Broad Street was always one-way. It's now been converted to two-way. However, when the bridge is done, a median will be in place, which will prevent any traffic to cross Racine Street, either east or west. Per Wisconsin DOT law, bicycles are to follow the rule of the road of motor vehicles. So why are you putting a trail in when by state law, a bike can't cross Racine? So that's hypocritical also. Furthermore, the entire intent, now this is the map of the Fox Cities Trail, it goes up to First Street because First Street has lights. It's a signalized intersection for safety. They have a circle down here where it's a conflict because of the traffic. When Broad Street, or when the bridge is going in and they decided on this median, they said it was too dangerous for cars to cross Racine, but the trail will cross Racine. I want that trail removed. Plain and simple. It doesn't align with the friendship trail or the official maps. We have in dire need of trails elsewhere. We already have a sidewalk. We already have a paved road with curb and gutter. This, I think, is something to pacify a certain individual and their friends who want to take a ride on their bike to Jefferson Park, because they can't come back, and it's going to be dangerous, and it's going to be a hindrance to the neighborhood. And it doesn't say whose side of the street it's on, or if it's, they're proposing on the water or whatever, but I'm asking that that trail on Broad Street be removed. This is, that's the east side of Racine. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the next page, if it can move. The consent agenda. Do we have a motion to remove anything from the consent agenda? Alderman Sevenek.
Mayor, I'm just going to have us take all three individually.
Go ahead.
At this time, I'll move that we approve the Common Council Minutes of 10, 18, and 21.
So motion is second. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item two. Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to accept the payment to Northeast Asphalt Inc., contract unit number 2021-10, for the street construction and rehab in the amount of $217,258.40. Payment number five.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item three. Alderman Grotty.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for the proposal to increase the Marina seasonal slip rate for 2022 from $40 a foot to $40.50 a foot, with the minimum of a slip would be $931.50.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll, oh, did you want to? Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. So Megan, do, I, I know that we're, our slips are, I think, full, and Appleton's is probably a quarter full. So do the voters know every year that when you need to raise the price, do you let them know ahead of time that you're going to be doing this?
Correct. The reason that we set this fee now is they will receive, all of the seasonal slip renters will receive a letter here in the coming weeks, that there, any adjustments that are made to any rates, they would receive that in their letter from the harbor master. And then they would have time to respond if they wish to renew their seasonal slip for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of October 15th through October 28th, 2021, in the amount of $1,253,414.14.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item two is the operators' license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2021 through '23 licensing period, as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated October 28th, 2021.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Do we have a motion for item three? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the Class A liquor license for the 2021 through 2022 licensing year at 140 Main Street, Manassas Market LLC.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. If the clerk could help me a little bit with this one, is this, this is the type where it is, is it like beer and wine, and then they can do samples or something like that? It's not hard liquor?
Right. It's not beer, it's intoxicating liquor, and they can serve samples with it, but it's to be consumed off premises besides the sample. So it is a bottled beverage that the consumer would purchase and then take home to consume. There'd be no pouring of glasses or any sort.
Oh, okay. All right. And does that include, that, that's not, that includes regular liquor, not beer and wine only?
It does not include beer, but wine and intoxicating liquor, just like a grocery store would have. store would have.
Yeah, but grocery stores have beer that they sell? I'm confused.
It's a separate license for the beer included with it, but at this point, they're just looking to serve sipping creams at their store.
And there's no, do we have any, do we have any limits on the number of these Class A licenses?
No, that would just be for a restaurant with a full kitchen and that sort of thing that wants to serve a full-service restaurant with everything included.
And that's why I asked the questions, because I wanted to make sure we weren't giving out a license where it could have potentially gone to a restaurant or something, so everyone understood that. I did get a call from one of the aldermen who had concern about that, so I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question would be too, I don't know the reasoning behind allowing 140 Main Street to have this Class A liquor license. Is it only, I know it's only for a year, but that building does not open 24 hours a day or anything. It's just certain times. And I just, I don't, I don't have to get the answer. I just don't know the reasoning that we would allow alcohol sales in this, in this building. That's just my point.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is a development agreement between the City of Manasha and Lake Shore Ridge Apartments. We do have some representatives from the development group here this evening. If there's no objection to having them share with us their plans, and then we could have questions after that. Is there any objection? I see no objections. I'm not sure who's leading the show. Tom?
Hello, everybody. My name is Tom Clister, part of four development. John Ford is also here from Catalyst Partners, and my brother and partner, Jack, is here as well. So about over a year ago, we were here and we passed the development agreement for Lake Shore Ridge Apartments. And Phase One included 64 apartments and then a condo development as well. We kind of used, so the 64 apartments, a handful of you were able to tour last week. The lease up is going very well. Today was opening day. I think we have 12 or 15 people that will be sleeping there tonight for the first time, so that's very good news. And with the strong lease up, we really hope we can do Phase Two sooner than we planned. As part of the development and to get our numbers to work, and as part of talking with the city as condos, you know, where you own them and that, that neighborhood was a desirable thing. So we had added condos to the development as, you know, you sell the condo, the new owner pays their property taxes, and the incentive left there was to help the apartments jive as the apartments' costs were high with, with what rents we could get while wanting to still maintain a product that was very nice for the, the area as a whole. So John can talk on this a little bit more, but I think the, the spirit of tonight is to look back at the plan. Originally, the plan called for in the development agreement, eight condo, condos and $2 million of increment. And going back to the drawing board, got the bids back, and they were way too high. The water table there is challenging, being close to the pond. Full basements and everything were tough. So John can talk a little bit more, but the new plan is, is what we would hope to do, is change it to six for-sale condos. The basements would be taken out. And this way, more resources and capital can be put towards the exterior finishes, and that to, to fit into the neighborhood rather than a lot of the costs we were finding were sunk in the dirt, that for how nice it is to have a walkout basement, a lot of those costs on the sale, you're just not going to get back. So we found the eight unit to be financially unfeasible. So I don't know if John, I mean, that, that, that's kind of the high-level detail. If anybody has any more questions, John can answer them.
Alderman Taylor, did you have a question for Mr. Clister, too?
How would you handle the severe storms with no basements in this area? Are you building a, a concrete wall or room or something to address that issue?
Sean, have you ever dealt with that, basements for a storm zone?
Good evening. John Ford with Catalyst Partners. Essentially, what we'd be proposing, instead of a full walkout basement, would be a slab-on-grade, but that level would be higher than obviously the walkout portion of it. The main, the main challenges with this site that we've looked at many different ways to make the eight-unit function, it's twofold. One, the size of it is with the full basements, we looked at decreasing the size of the basements. We looked at then also finishing portions of the basement. But to answer your question, Daveal Engineering, local civil engineering, has been fully engaged. They've looked at all of this to incorporate a full stormwater plan that, that they're very comfortable with, that are in the documents, the design documents. But what we've gotten to essentially, not only was the square footage with the full basements creating the price issues, and I know obviously that from a price standpoint, you've probably all heard about it, obviously in the press. You know, just to give you some real numbers, when we started this on the eight-unit, the original design, just the hard costs were around $2.65 million. We decreased the size of the basements and added finish level to drive obviously the, the overall price. Further ahead, when we reprice that out, that number changed from 2.6 to 3.2 million. We've been able to, we've tried to value engineer that back down. We've gotten the hard costs down to about 2.95 million, but that's just the hard costs. There's an additional for this project of soft costs, due diligence, land costs, things like that. It's another $400,000. So all in on the eight units were about 3.4 million. We think we could probably sell them, if you sold all eight, for about 3.2 million. So obviously, not, not the best way. On the sixth unit, if we go, what we propose is to go slab-on-grade, and also reduce it by the two units. What that does is the tree line, for those of you that are familiar with the site, because we were maximizing the size, or maximizing the number of units at eight, we were having to put a very large retaining wall, which would be on the south end of the site, which was in the amount of $100,000. So by reducing it to six units from eight, we can eliminate the retaining wall, basically just do it with grade for drainage and so forth, and then also eliminate the basements, which is a significant portion of the overall costs.
So there, there is no basements?
What we propose, there would be no basements, correct.
Okay. And is there some sort of a safe room or a storeroom, storm room?
Yeah, we would add additional storage. So in particular, right now, if you can picture, obviously there's a stairwell that goes down, so we pick up that square footage in the overall plan. Are you asking for, with regards to storms, if there's an actual safe room, or just for storage? Yeah. At the current time, we would not, we have not designed that, no.
Okay.
But there would be additional storage, obviously, because now you have a single-story condo versus obviously a full basement and so forth.
And half the council really responded to the delight of your, the apartment building that you built, and with their tour through there about a week or, week ago. And the other half of the council couldn't make it, so I don't know if we can set something up, if we can get four members together to take another tour. We'd probably enjoy that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
My question is for the other gentleman that gave us the tour the other night. You had indicated that you had about 25 leases. Is that there was possibility of even more at that time? So where are you so far?
Yeah, we've, we've been doing well. Right now, I believe we're at, at 28 signed leases. We've got a number that are, we're hoping to turn from applications to leases, but we're definitely beating our original projections and are really hopeful that a Phase Two could, could come sooner than, than we anticipated, so.
The reason I ask that question is that I've, not all the council members could make it that day, and so that they know that these are very nice apartments, and that you have a number of them already leased out. And as he had mentioned earlier, you have 12 people, or 12 units, they're, they've moved in today, and very nice. I would just want to point out two things that I really liked about the, maybe three, were the wide hallways. Very nice. I'm a mover in trade, basically, and having the big, wide hallways are very nice. The beautiful outdoor patios, something that when I talked with Sam, I told him that I probably wouldn't even be in favor of this project unless there was that unique quality to your apartments, and you've exceeded that. And then, of course, underground parking. Very nice. It's something we don't do enough around here. It's just starting, but if you go, say, to Madison or something, everything is underground parking. So very pleased with your first phase. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. John had answered the, the question about eight units and 3.2 million or something like that. Price would probably be around $400,000 per condo. Now with the six condos, how much of an expense will that be for the six condos?
Yeah, it's a good question. We've been working with an experienced residential broker in that area for all that data. We anticipated the eight-unit, selling them around four and a quarter. Now on the, on the reduced, dropping to, you know, still a very nice condo. These would be in the range of 1,600 to 1,700 square feet, two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, obviously fully attached, patio in the back and so forth.
Yep.
We anticipate, she anticipates that she can sell these for in the upper 300s, I would say 385 to 390.
Okay.
As far as costs go on this, we budget price this out. The hard costs are right around 1.85 million. So total costs, you gotta still add that 400,000
Right.
For soft costs and land and so forth. So we're probably around 2.2.
Okay, got it. All right. Thank you very much, John.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, again, John. I think Alderman Pella kind of answered basket already for, for myself. But based on no basements, close to $400,000 for a condo, is there still a market? Do you still see the need for the, not a need, but still have no problems probably subbing, getting these sold?
Yeah. The broker I mentioned we're working with is, is very comfortable at that level. She pulled numerous comps in, in the area that support that. I think the target market for these are really folks that are potentially downsizing a bit, selling a single-family home. Perhaps they spend part of their time in Florida. They want a very nice product, but secure, and don't want to have to, you know, do all the yard work and things like that. So yes, we're very comfortable that these would be able to sell at that price point.
Okay. And then to Alderman Taylor's point, is there going to be like a crawl space or anything? I mean, is it just a, a flat cement?
Slab-on-grade, but we're, we're looking to build an additional storage space, but not for, if you're asking from a safety or from a, from a storm
Just, you know.
Tornado.
Right.
That is not in the design right now, no.
No, I, I know that. But I didn't know if the, even though there's no basement, maybe there's a crawl space or a little bit of
For storage or?
Yeah. Not storage, but just there.
Not at the current design, no.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if my question is for you or for Mr. Clister. As I'm thinking back to when this initially came forward, I think there, I, I'm recalling that there was an effort and a commitment to, to make the sides of these condos that face the properties across the pond, to have that side of the development sort of similar or at least complementary to what's going on, on the other side of the pond. With this change, is that effort still happening?
The design that we would propose is still going to be the same design as we had before, just minus the two units and minus the lower level. But everything else would still be the same. I don't know, Sam, if you have the, the graphic? It's in the packet? Okay. So that graphic that you have in the packet shows the color coding, taking the two units off of the kind of south end, and then also the lower level. But from a, from a, from the back or from the front, the overall design aesthetics of the rest of it would still be the same that was shown before.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Yeah, I mean, as you can imagine, from a civil standpoint, the way they designed this, if you have the level of the pond, they basically go up about two feet to get to the basement level before the eight-unit option with the, with the walkout basement. You then have about nine feet higher than that to get to your first floor, which means you're 11 feet above the, the level of the pond. That's what was driving, obviously, the retaining wall, being $100,000, given how tall it was and how long it was. What they can do now is we can actually reduce the, the height of the first level, because it'll probably be, end up being somewhere in the middle. We obviously haven't fully redesigned from an engineering standpoint yet, but instead of being 11 feet above the pond, Daveal is thinking it's going to be somewhere around five or six feet above.
Thank you, Mayor. So John, just two more little questions here. Condo fees, what would those condo fees for, be for the people?
We budget priced out for, you know, the annual maintenance and grass cutting and snow, snowplow and everything. It would probably be around 150 to 200 per month.
Okay. And that's pretty consistent, even with the, the neighbors to their, to their
To the west.
To the west?
Yeah.
Okay. And so the, the biggest, I guess, biggest change to your plans from eight to down to six is the elimination of that basement storage area. Okay?
Right.
Got it. All right. Because of the, the, the price got to be considerable.
Yeah.
Quite honestly. And then with that retaining wall. Okay, understood. Thank you very much. Thank you. You had mentioned that you scaled it back, and you'll have fewer units, which in my opinion would be actually nicer, because off to, well, depending on where you're standing, but off to the left from the apartments, there's a, a number of trees that kind of screen the area, and I would hope that because of that, that screening is more in place. And that way, it also, for many of those folks who have concerns about the beautiful apartment buildings, it would help to screen also. So you're saving more of the trees. Am I correct?
You're talking of the trees out along the roadway?
Yes.
Yes. Plan is to, those will all remain.
All right.
So Director Schrader, did you want to explain to us what our options are tonight?
Yeah, so basically, from a community development standpoint, we've been in communication with the development group on this this summer, kind of have discussed with them their challenges. They continue to have gone back to try and make the project work. They are at the stage where they, they really cannot finance these eight-unit apartment, or, excuse me, eight-unit condos. So what we're, what we're looking at today is, is to bring this discussion here, to check and see the appetite for the common council to, to bring back a future development agreement amendment to reduce from eight to six units at the following common council meeting. So again, there would be no action this evening, but if, if acceptable, we would draft that development agreement amendment, bring that back at the next meeting for consideration. By the general conversation By the general conversations I've had or I've heard this evening, I think that would be acceptable to do that. Again, making very, still high-end condo development here, just reduced in size, and I believe as Clisters or Mr. Ford had mentioned, there is certainly, they are certainly still hitting their hard cost requirements within the, within the original development agreement. So, that would be basically what we are looking for. If there would be any other discussions about bringing something back, we would love to hear about that right now.
Do we wanna make a motion to direct you to bring that back? I'm guessing that that's what you're all thinking, but I just wanna make sure that I'm reading things correctly. If someone would wanna make that motion, we'll still bring back the actual development agreement at the next meeting, but if you're good with that, Alderman Pella?
Yes, yeah. I'll make a motion to bring this back to, bring this back to council in the following, the following meeting. I don't have the right words, but.
Okay, so, there's a motion to bring revised development agreement showing six units to the next council meeting?
Right, yes, definitely.
And I think Ted seconded? Okay, oh, Ann?
Ann.
Ann Garati.
No.
Yeah.
So, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Should I, are there any opposed? Okay, there's none opposed, so we don't have to do a roll call then. Thank you for coming tonight, gentlemen. It was really a nice experience to see your units that are done too.
Bye, gentlemen, thank you very much. You too, thank you.
Item K is a reconsideration of the redistricting resolution. Clerk Prokramer, would you like to share with us why we need to do this? Or do you wanna do that, Director Schrader? I'm not sure.
I can certainly take that lead. So, within the common council consideration today is to reconsider the Resolution R4021 related to the redistricting that was approved at the previous meeting. So, at the previous meeting, the common council approved both the wards as well as the aldermatic districts within Resolution R40. At that time, staff was able to draw in those wards and officially submit those within the census data system. Upon doing that, we received a call from Winnebago County that one of our wards actually crossed a supervisory district line. Again, as kind of noted within the memo, it is not illegal for a municipality to set a ward across a supervisory district line because they are tentative. However, with that said, is most of the time, we would have a 60-day window to set tentative supervisory districts, 60-day windows to set wards and aldermatic districts, and then another 60 days for the county to set the final districts. Being a little sped up, if you will, in this sense, we're kind of on a tight of a, a bit of a time crunch to look at these, and once the wards are established and they are received by the county, the county would be required to then modify, modify their supervisory districts to meet our needs and our require, or our wards that we've established. However, again, due to that tight time restriction and December 1st coming to pull papers very, very quickly, they are looking at approving their final supervisory district boards, I think on November 16th or the 18th. So, with that, they are requesting us to basically add a 17th ward at that supervisory district boundary line. This does, this does not change anything with the aldermatic districts. That aldermatic district number seven, I believe, would just have three wards. So, again, there would be no difference there, and the reason why a supervisory district cannot cross, cut a ward in half is just due to the voting in the ballots that are submitted by the city clerk. It would be very difficult for them to establish which ballots go to which residents if one ward, there was one ward that had two supervisory districts. Again, that ward is how, how they determine which ballot you receive. So, again, basically, we're just looking at breaking aldermatic district or, excuse me, ward number 10 into two districts, two wards, excuse me, and creating that 17th ward. Now, that ward is, has a population of 126, which does fall below the deviation requirements. However, it is a complete island. It does not connect through any type of right-of-way or anything to the city of Manasha. So, with that, that is a legal exception within the state statutes to allow that to be within a separate supervisory district in that sense and below the, below the requirement there. So, again, all we're looking at doing, no changes to any aldermatic districts, just adding that 17th ward, so I have three wards within District 7, I believe.
Alderman Savick, Nick.
That is the longest answer.
Should've said you wanted a short.
At this time, Mayor, I'd like for us to move for R4021, which would approve.
So, first, we need to reconsider.
Okay, well, I'll move to reconsider to approve Ward Set 3, a part of the Resolution R4021.
Is there a motion to reconsider? Was that a second, Alderman Taylor?
He did second, yes.
Okay, so, there's a motion, a second to reconsider, if we could have a roll call
Motion carries eight-zero.
And now, the original motion is back on the table, so we'd have to amend that motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, would you like to make an amendment to the original motion then, Alderman Savick?
Sure, I'll offer the amendment for the adding the approval of Ward Set 3 as part of Resolution R4021.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor? Alderman Taylor did. So, now we have.
Mayor, at this time, I'll move.
You don't need to move, it's already on the floor.
R4021 is amended.
Yeah, it's already on the floor that way now.
Okay.
And Alderman Nichols has a, has discussion, I believe?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. When I heard about this a few weeks ago, when we were talking about a special meeting, I asked the mayor why exactly this was coming forward, and he did some digging and found the current maps, a format that I could use and read, and compared it to this, and we talked about it a little bit, and the difference this year being, this time around, being that 10 years ago, the county chose to follow municipal boundaries when drawing their supervisory districts. So, Manasha, the city of Manasha had its own supervisor representatives on the county board. This time around, the new maps are blended districts between the city of Manasha, Village of Fox Crossing, and I think.
City of Appleton.
City of Appleton is in there too. So, the county maps are significantly different this time around, which is one of the driving reasons why we have to make this, this change. So, I just wanted to make everybody aware that there is significant difference in our supervisory districts as proposed this time around. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on the motion as amended? Oops, other one, though.
But I still say when you reconsider and someone offers an amendment, that then you...
Motion carries eight-zero.
So, item two is a proposal for an EPA brownfield grant. Do we have a motion? Or does anyone wish to have Director Schrader explain this one, the short version, though, this time, Sam?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. So, the, the EPA has an annual community-wide site assessment grant that is, that is put out. This community-wide site assessment grant is basically a pool of dollars that a community can use across, across their municipal boundaries to, to conduct research or develop plans in relation to brownfield development. With all of the existing projects that we kind of have going on, almost every single one involves a brownfield site or potentially contaminated or found to be contaminated site, and those can be fairly expensive to conduct phase-one analysis, phase-twos, do the research, as well as, you know, what we've seen from planning efforts in that sense. So, what we, the community development department did, we looked to put out a request for proposal for somebody to actually apply for this grant for us. This is, again, these federal grants are pretty dense in their application process. So, what we looked at was for, for a company to write the grant as well as then implement as well and manage that grant, so conduct all the annual or quarterly reporting of what has been spent or projects kind of in the works. So, in front of us today, we did receive three proposals. Staff did review that, and we recommend kind of moving forward with a proposal from StanTech. We have worked with StanTech and, as well as StanTech has a lot of experience specifically with this grant and a lot of local success in getting that for municipalities. So, upon receiving or if awarded, this funds could be up to $500,000, and that $500,000 would be used or would have to be used over a three-year period. So, again, if, if we move forward with this proposal tonight as well as a motion, we would have StanTech write this grant for us, and then if awarded, they would look to implement that grant over that three-year period. So, again, I think this is a very good opportunity for the city of Manasha to potentially get ahead of existing as well as future developments and provide better data to those developers that are also coming in, because this, these dollars could be used to preliminary, get a phase-one on a potential development site, and we can share that information with those future developers in that regard. So, again, staff is recommending approval of this proposal with StanTech to apply, receive, and spend the grant dollars from EPA community-wide assessment, as well as have StanTech implement that program for us if awarded.
Alderman Savick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve Resolution R4121, Resolution authorizing the preparation for fiscal year 2022 and implementation of the U.S. EPA Brownfield Community-Wide Assessment Grant with StanTech.
So, motion, a second by Alderman Tomgarati?
Just to make it clear, I'm not StanTech.
Hmm. What do you think? Could we get it, could we get it cheaper if we do it through? Yeah. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a conversation with the DNR a few weeks ago and, and he had mentioned to me, how many contaminated sites do you think there is at Manasha? And I was thinking, well, maybe 25, 30 gas stations we might have had through the years, so I said probably about 50, and he said we have over 450 contaminated sites in the city of Manasha, so it's, it's really amazing through the years how many sites have issues. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, I'm a little unclear on this, so if awarded, how would the $500,000 be used? What exactly would StanTech be doing?
So, StanTech, again, would be, would be managing that grant, and then the funds would be used specific to conducting phase-one analysis of properties, doing the research that, to support that, potentially phase-two projects, as well as community outreach and potential redevelopment plans as well. So, specific to where the dollars get spent, I think we would, we would certainly bring back that discussion to the common council at a future date if awarded.
You mean as far as site selection goes or something else? I'm curious how the sites would be selected.
So, from a grant application standpoint, we would look at kind of the, the known abandoned industrial sites. We would estimate out potential costs that would be associated with those, and we would build that application. If awarded, the community-wide grant assessment can be used across the entire community, though, not specifically to those identified industrial sites. So, if a future development site does show up, potentially, we could, we could look at using these dollars to implement and to assist in that development.
So, for the purposes of the application, some sites will be selected as sort of a demonstration of need?
Correct, correct.
And if awarded, then that effort becomes citywide and can include more than just industrial sites?
Correct. In this, again, from a brownfield site, it also does include lead and asbestos, so also would include, you know, old abandoned buildings that we could use the dollars to, to evaluate that information.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Garati?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, maybe said differently, if we would have applied for this a couple of years ago and got it, how would that dollars been used, let's say, for the brin? Have you used the brin as an example, because that was contaminated land? Would, how would the process work then? Or would it have saved anything or helped the developer?
Certainly. So, I think from an acquisition standpoint, so again, the city did acquire that, you know, we would look at doing a phase-one immediately upon that acquisition and potentially a phase-two immediately after the demolition on that. So, when we're listing that property for, for sale for negotiation purposes, instead of saying their soil's unknown, we would know those soils upfront. So, again, it should allow us to much more efficiently as well as collectively work through that development process much quicker, because the city has already kind of done that legwork, if you will, on the front end, so they can find, find their, their costs much tighter than running into, you know, issues at a later date and coming back. So, hopefully, it moves that process through much, much quicker.
Sam, does this put us in a position of a discovery or exposure that, that we would have to clean something up? Does that, does this study generate that?
I might have to allow the city attorney to answer this, but from a standpoint of the city of Manasha, we do have certain protections for properties that we own. From a legality standpoint, I believe if something is found, a contaminated site is found through a phase-two analysis, so the phase-two would be the actual soil testing. If something is found in that sense, then it would have to be reported to the DNR. At that stage, let's say the city does not own it, that property owner owns it, they would have to work with the DNR to establish a plan to, to correct that issue. Again, we would, if, if the city didn't own a property, we would have to work directly with that owner to establish, you know, a requirement or an agreement to allow us to do that phase-two analysis, or potentially, it's, it's made available, you know, at the time a developer is, is kind of coming in, so that it moves along through that process a little bit quicker. But... But from other legality issues, again, there's certainly, you know, the sky's the limit with some things. But, you know, anytime you go looking for something and you find something, it potentially could be a problem. But I don't foresee it from a city of Manassia standpoint.
Are you looking at something on the horizon as far as development? That we're looking to do this right now?
So I think, you know, recently, you know, with the Bonta site, the Gilbert site, the Whiting site, the Brin site, all of those sites, you know, are known to have contamination on them. So again, while, you know, the Brin site is moving forward, there's still, you know, the restaurant potential lot for that. There's still, you know, lots of available land on the Bonta and the Gilbert site. As we progress in the Whiting standpoint, instead of the city funding those initial analysis, we can work through this grant dollars to do that. The other thing I didn't mention is that the EPA also does have brownfield grants available for actual cleanup. So this isn't a cleanup grant, this is more of an assessment grant. And it's found that if you've had the EPA Community Wide Site Assessment Grant, the likelihood of getting one of those grants to actually do the cleanup because of the stepped approach is more likely. So, again, that would be something we could look at in the future.
So my conversation with the DNR, and we have 450-some sites in the city, doesn't seem like there's probably a lot of contamination throughout the city with 450 different sites. I'm just concerned if we're gonna expose something that we have to work to clean up and it costs us money by doing that.
So I don't think that the standpoint of this grant would be just to go out and do a Phase 1 of the entire community, or a Phase 2 of the entire community. It would be looking at specific, you know, future development sites where there's known progress.
And who directs that? What sites do you look at?
So, as I mentioned to Alderman Nichols, in the future, I think we'll need to still have those conversations about how exactly the award would be implemented. But again, I think this would be step number one, is to be approve this proposal from StanTech to write this grant. Again, between now and December 1st of when it's due, 30 days period for this extensive of grant is a short notice. So we are hoping to still kind of get this thing out and going.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 8-0.
Do we have a motion for item 3? Alderman Sevenek.
Mayor, at this time, well, I'll move for R 4221.
Is there a second? So motion is second, is there discussion?
Yes, I don't know if Jennifer. This is, this resolution with state statutes allows for both Nina and Manassia to exceed its levy limits. And although it doesn't affect the city of Manassia this time around, it would possibly for the city of Nina. But both communities need to implement it, and we may need to in the future. So, maybe either the chief or Jennifer, you want to address that, so it's more understood.
Sure. Yeah, basically, tonight, this resolution for us is just kind of a formality. Because the state dictates the amount that you can impose as your tax levy. There is an exception, you have an adjustment to that tax levy. If you're, one of them is if you're part of a joint fire department. But both, all the communities that are part of that department must pass that resolution to allow any of the communities to use that exception. The city of Manassia will not be, nor can it this year, actually. So we just have to pass that for the other municipality to be able to use that if they wish. And we would have to pass that resolution every year. But it would allow each municipality to be able to take advantage of that, if they needed that.
This was approved unanimously in the Nina and Manash Fire Rescue Committee.
Correct.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Jennifer, I got kind of a dumb question here. I talked a little bit with Alderman Ted Grotty before the meeting, and asked him. And I don't know, so that's why I'm gonna ask this. So, if you exceed the levy limit, and I was talking with Alderman Ted Grotty on this, do the taxpayers cover that? Is that covered by the taxpayers?
The state sets an amount that you cannot exceed. And there are several factors. But then there are also certain exceptions that you can use every year. One of them is if you're a member of a joint fire department. So you can add that amount, basically your increase onto your allowable tax levy. But on any given year, without using any exceptions, you cannot exceed the levy that's set by the state. Where you are, there is a penalty for that.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I had mentioned before, this will not affect the city of Manassia at all. We're not in that situation. Nina may not either, but this has to be approved just in case. And Nina has a feeling they might be able to have to do this, so that's why we're approving it.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Sessman, when I read the resolution, I'm reading that, and, well, let me back up. It's our understanding that Nina may need to use this this year. And since we share a fire department, that we are required to pass this resolution as well. So when I read the resolution, to me, it says that Manassia can also exceed its levy limit for the purposes of funding the fire department for 2022. But then I heard you say that we can't. So can you clarify that for me?
Basically, the resolution has to indicate that we both are authorized to do that. But in this case, the city of Manassia would not be eligible to take that exception this year.
So, that's my question. Why wouldn't we be eligible to?
The increase to the city of Manassia is not enough, large enough to do so?
Oh, the increase, the required increase?
For that budget.
Of that budget is not enough for?
For us to use that exception.
Okay.
However, it is for Nina this year due to the formula change. So then, putting this in place allows them to use that if they should need to in a couple of weeks when they pass their budget, so that we can have this approved prior to that.
So there's a ceiling for levy limits, but a floor for this sort of thing? Got it, thank you.
Alderman Sevenek.
If you recall, when we recently agreed to the amounts that both communities pay, Manassia's was less this time around than Nina in prior years. So that's why. And so in other words, theirs has increased. And that doesn't necessarily mean they would have to have this. It needs to be in place before budgets.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 8-0.
Do we have a motion for item number 4?
Can we, is it all right? Can we ask Sam to speak on this a little bit, seeing that we did have quite a bit of conversation from the gallery? And then I do have a question for him while he does that. I wrote, "Ask for future CP plans update." So are we going to be next year looking at doing more in other areas for this particular plan? And taking it step by step?
Yes, certainly. So, thank you for the opportunity, I guess, to go through all of it. Just as a quick update from the question that you just had. So the comprehensive plan this year does just update the land use, as well as the transportation sections of that plan. As you can recall, we also did not do that plan update last year, and actually carried fund dollars over due to COVID. Because again, the concerns of meeting in public last year was much worse than the concerns this year. So within the TIF 13 proposed budget, as well as the project plan amendment that was approved within the last couple of months, we would be looking at doing a housing analysis, a housing study of the overall community, likely in the first quarter of 2022. And then with that, from that, we would also look to update a select amount of chapters within the comprehensive plan. It was discussed when we had accepted this proposal about doing the full comprehensive plan, the remaining chapters as one. However, due to, you know, the tight budget that we are at every year, it does not look like we would be able to do that. But that certainly could be an element that would be discussed in the coming month here as far as, you know, doing that remaining update. But otherwise, we would look at splitting that out into additional chapters, which would include the adoption of the housing study as part of that. So it takes some real-life data within the comprehensive plan. So I guess the overall comprehensive plan, just to kind of go through that. Again, we are looking to update the land use, as well as the transportation sections of this. We did approve a contract with MSA and this weird building, I believe Jason was?
He just waved at us.
All right. So our consultant, Jason Valerius with MSA, is here to certainly answer any questions or to walk us through that process as well. We did approve a comprehensive plan ad hoc committee to also review some of this information as it was presented. And the common council also approved a public participation plan. So that public participation plan included a survey, a public hearing at the city plan commission level, and two vision sessions, as well as the adoption of this resolution this evening. So those, we have kind of gone through that process. So we did have, again, two vision sessions. We had a survey, as was noted earlier today. Public participation, you know, 136 individuals taking that survey. Again, that is a lower amount. You certainly try to find ways to get that survey out to people. But it's also very difficult to make people take it. So, again, this was then presented and had a public hearing last Tuesday at the city plan commission level. There was no public comment at that time as well. A member of the ad hoc committee did participate, or did show up just to kind of show their support in the proposed plan. From the plan commission level, we did have quite a long discussion throughout that meeting. It was the only item on that agenda. And I think it was the mayor's longest plan commission meeting ever.
I think we did longer.
Yes, certainly. So with that, again, we had, the primary discussions were, as it relates to some of the mapping elements, as well as ADUs or accessory dwelling units. So, a lot of that conversation around accessory dwelling units that was previously presented, the plan commission did recommend removing that. That would be your garages turning into a mother-in-law suite, or your carriage houses. And again, so there was a lengthy discussion about removing that. From a standpoint, I guess, of, you know, kind of what the city sees as far as, or the city staff administration, the ad hoc committee, as well as, again, the professionals from MSA, looking at, you know, the existing future land use map 10 years ago to the future land use map today, it was identified, you know, of the areas of spot zoning. This was certainly reworded within our proposed comp plan to create neighborhoods. And additionally, smaller commercial sites within those areas can be very, very vital to a neighborhood. But they can also be very detrimental as well. So within the comprehensive plan, you can see that we actually propose, it's a separate district than just your general commercial, your commercial. We actually refer to it, I believe, as neighborhood mixed use. And within that, we can potentially look at creating kind of a transitional district, if you will, to potentially not allow all uses that are currently allowed within the commercial district, but to allow uses that are more fitting within a neighborhood setting. So that's kind of what, you know, that plan was looked at as kind of creating that neighborhood, those nooks. But also, understanding there's certain nuisance with certain commercial activities versus others. You know, an individual that's doing taxes, you know, in a neighborhood certainly is not detrimental to an overall neighborhood. But potentially, as it was noted, you know, a car lot that has lights on all through the night, that very much could be because of the nuisance that it would cause, or the vehicles kind of coming in and out. So that's kind of an overview of the overall package. I guess I will note one other thing that was certainly noted, or I apologize, I'm gonna do two. One was the trail along Broad Street. So this was actually taken out of the comprehensive outdoor rec plan that was approved by the common council and the park board through a lengthy, again, public process in 2020 to look at kind of aligning the trestle trail directly with Jefferson Park, instead of kind of looping up to First Street and coming back down and around. It seems to us that the conversations we were having around that transportation, that that's typically the path, you know, of least resistance, or not necessarily least resistance, but that's a natural path that a lot of people want to take, and would take anyways regardless if it was signed or not. So potentially, from a city standpoint of making that safer, is what we are looking at. The second thing, I guess, I will notice is, you know, the density aspect of suburban residential versus urban residential. So, within the city of Manassia's current comprehensive plan, or excuse me, current zoning code, R1 or single-family requires a minimum lot width of 60 feet, for example. Many of the, I would almost argue 50% of the development, the existing residential lots within the community, within kind of our core community, are non-conforming. Because they do not meet that minimum lot width. So again, what we try to do is look at the existing development and try to differentiate between, you know, what is currently there, what is kind of the tighter development, and then what has spurred looking at existing densities, as well as opening potential doors for, you know, some areas. I believe it's out on Manitowoc, potentially east of Kernan Avenue, to look at potentially still bringing some of that type of development back in the future versus having, you know, very, very large lots that oftentimes cost more from a service standpoint for the city versus having tighter, compacted lots. Looking at the services provided, the cost of infrastructure that is always rising, as well as, you know, the density, or, excuse me, the value per acre. Oftentimes, these smaller houses on smaller lots, while they might be, they might not be the largest, you know, assessed value, but if you look at them from a value per acre standpoint, they are very, very functional and allow the city to really support itself through its services. So I hope that gives a good breakdown. And again, Jason is here to answer any questions, to provide a little bit more background professionally from the MSA, answer any comp plan regulations, state statutes, and what have you.
You had all the same points I was gonna bring up, Sam. Alderman Langdon? Oops, I'm sorry. Alderman Repella, I guess you were first.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor. Sam, I was looking at this, let's see here. Sam, I was looking at this, let's see here. Your plan for the, for the trails and the bike paths and things like that, and I, and, and Sandra pointed this out for one of them, but then I noticed another one. Down Manitowoc Road, past the water plant, you're, at some point, you're planning to put a trail or a path all the way from, oh, where it hits Manitowoc and Plank, where it makes that turn all the way to Lake Park. How long or whatever, how much in the future will that be?
So, comprehensive plan is a vision for 20 years in the future. Realistically, again, it's, it looks at, you know, a 10-year feasibility. So, again, you, you look at the priorities, that's certainly a lot of municipal boundaries between on Manitowoc Road, and you look at the feasibility of other projects, it probably is one of those that are on the tail end of that priority, but certainly would allow for a great, great trail connection through that area.
Okay, I agree. I, I see lots of people walking on the Lake Park Trail, north and south on Lake Park Road.
Alderman Repella, the, the solid lines are things that are already existing?
Yes.
So, the area that you're talking about shows that there's already bike lanes there. So, green is a bike lane and blue is a bike trail. So, that chunk of Manitowoc or Plank Road that you were talking about is-
Is already blue?
Yes.
Yes, but then where it hits that Y-turn.
Oh, okay, you're talking about a different area than I thought you were.
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, that Y-turn runs north and south. I should say it runs east and west.
I thought you were talking about Manitowoc Street, not Manitowoc Road.
Got her. Okay, so that one, okay, I, I got that one figured out. Now, I did happen, I, I understand that the trail going through our, our Bonta property and through Coakley's property, that's been a, a situation where Mr. Coakley was going to contribute some money to us, and hopefully we can get that on the forefront, because I, I don't know how long his promise of paying for some of that will continue. But I do notice the one that Sandra brought up, the, the trail from Main Street all the way down through Broad, all the way to Jefferson Park. I do understand it is a trail to get us to Jefferson Park, and it does continue. I mean, it, it does go through that Manitowoc Road, goes through, you know, goes through, past Tech Rod, down through to Jefferson Park, and then that's how you can continue the loop. How long before that proposed path, trail would be put into place? Again, I know you told me it's a 20-year plan.
It, it would be that same answer.
Okay. Okay. That's one of your shortest answers today. Okay? Oh, okay, yeah, you're even micless, wow. Okay. Okay, I, I can understand that. I also understand Sandra's point of, there is a sidewalk already there, and I do understand her thoughts of, would you have a sidewalk plus a trail or plus a path? So, that's a concern I have on that. I don't know if that's been explained well enough to us. All right, thank you very much.
Other questions? Did you have something else, Mayor? Okay. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. On that Broad Street Trail, I live on that block, and it seems like if you're 16 to 35, you'll take the chance going straight on Broad Street, crossing, crossing Eversean Street. Seems like a lot of families, seniors, all come down Broad, turn left on Milwaukee and cross at the lights on, on First Street. So, it's, it's kind of age-related. When you talk about spot zoning, Sam, you talked a little bit about that. What type of businesses? I don't see, I should ask you, what type of businesses are you looking for spot zoning?
So, it, it wouldn't necessarily be spot zoning because, again, these, these properties are already zone commercial and they have a commercial presence. But what we would be potentially looking at, you know, is, you know, potentially your, your service industries, like I mentioned, you know, somebody doing taxes, insurance. So, much more low-key than, you know, a, a car wash or, you know, something else that, that just really doesn't fit. So, you know, really low, kind of the low-density commercial that has not a lot of exterior, you know, storage or exterior usage, potentially has minimal traffic, minimal customers. So, again, you know, not a, not a gas station, not anything like that. And, and allowing us to kind of create that, that district that fits between would allow the community and the city to, to really hone in and establish that better in the future. Because right now, these properties, if there's own C1 general commercial or even C2 central business district, it opens that gamut to almost any type of commercial use. So, potentially rezoning some of these properties to that neighborhood commercial, if you will, would be a kind of the direction we would be looking at.
It always seems to start out good, but it always seems to go sideways. You get a business in and doesn't make it, and something else happens, and something else happens. And I looked at, for instance, I think 321 Conamex Street, right by the railroad tracks. We had a guy come in here and just wanted a little hobby shop restoring older motorcycles and things, and pretty soon there's 25, 30 motorcycles parked out back. Then he enters into the car sales, and I, I know Joe did a great job working that business, but, and the neighbors were complaining about it, and it took about a year and a half for us to, to clean that up and move them along. So, these, it always starts out good intentions, but what I've seen being up here, you know, since the 90s, it always seems to go sideways. And also Sandra mentioned about parking, that we'd have more, that developers don't want to pay for parking, and would that fall under, you know, would that fall under the city to provide parking, or would it be street parking like the big cities where you never have the cars off the street?
So, I, I'm not sure if it was specifically looking at, you know, the, the C2 central business district that we currently have. But again, the, that's what our current regulations are within the downtown zoning district, is that only multifamily uses are required to provide parking. In, in the thought processes there is that, you know, parking does take up a, a huge chunk of, of property, especially when it's identified specifically to a business. I mean, you can look out, you know, just north of City Hall here, the, the huge areas of parking that are just signed and, and very underutilized. So, the thought processes there of more common parking, potentially street parking. And again, I think this is, this is somewhat of a growing trend as well. When you, we look at, at today's economy with, you know, your Ubers and your electric vehicles and potentially, you know, other shared services or, you know, electric scooter, electric bike, or what have you, the demand for a, a vehicle is potentially also, again, looking at the, a 20-year aspect, is potentially going down as well. So, we don't want to necessarily overbuild parking if that is kind of the growing trend that, you know, the economy is also going. So, you know, we have a great number of mixed-use developments kind of happening in the corridor and looking at, at those developments as, okay, what are you providing for, for bike storage, for, for bike racks? Because a lot of those individuals may not have, may not have a vehicle because they want to be able to, you know, just traverse, get everything that they need, you know, potentially, you know, food or a gas station, or whatever they would need in a, in a small corridor. So, that's kind of what, what that, I believe, that aspect in the comprehensive plan is trying to get at.
I agree with what Alderman Savinick said earlier about the, and we've had this conversation with you, and it seems to be moving in that direction with the underground parking or, or covered parking within the structure, as he used a great example, Madison is a great example for that. So, I'm always in favor of that. And with our mixed use coming downtown here, I was gonna talk to you about, you know, people parking boats, utility trailers, cube vans, delivery vehicles, and using, utilizing those parking lots for that. We have a lot of storage facilities throughout the area here, and I think somehow in our, in our code, we need to start addressing that. I think that we don't end up with, and usually what happens too, with somebody's brother-in-law or brother that wants to park the boat, he's got an extra space downtown here, it might not be his, but it's somebody else's, and that, or they got a utility trailer or something. And that's, that's how that, that starts in, in the downtown area, it just doesn't, doesn't look good, you know? I would never be a fan of on-street parking. Today is the first time now the streets should be empty, and I know there's a grace period here that the police department puts up with, but I think it's a good that we, we clear the streets, especially Wisconsin weather. Years ago, I helped write the ordinance, it used to be a $10 parking ticket overnight. And so a lot of, I rode around with Superintendent Jacobson and on a snow night of eight inches of snow, and there was 84 cars parked on the street. So, we bumped that up to $20, which $20 bill was a lot of money 25 years ago, and doesn't have the same kick. It does, probably have to move that up to 50. So, but for those services, cleaning streets, you know, it's, and I think for the police department, it's nice to go down the streets, not to see all these vehicles on the street and what activity might be going on or something too. So, and I guess the question was, by Sandra, are we really modeling ourselves as a 17,000 residents? Or are we looking at bigger models of Milwaukee, Minneapolis, Chicago, and pulling a lot of stuff out of there? I mean, they certainly have many growing pains, or they're already out there, and we're working our way with population growth, but is that something that we're kind of modeling ourselves after?
I, I believe to answer that question, you're always looking at what other municipalities, what other regions are doing, what is working, what isn't working, and what best fits your community.
We always try to have a comparable, though. I know, like, when we do something with the fire department or police department and, or public works, we always try to find someone in the neighborhood of our population and see how they're doing things too, and not looking at, when we rewrote the landmarks ordinance years ago, we looked at a lot of comparable smaller cities like us, and we didn't look at, you know, Chicago or Milwaukee or things like that.
Again, I, I think you're looking at a lot of trends, but it's not necess, we're not taking Chicago's code and trying to make it City of Manashe's code. And I think to counter that slightly, and not, not that it doesn't have weight, but Manashe is part of a, a larger metropolitan area.
Absolutely.
You know, the, the metropolitan area has a population of 250,000. So, while, while you want to make sure you, you look at our population and our needs and our uses as, you know, the 18,000, we are part of a, a larger community that, that can move some of those trends further than, you know, Wisconsin Rapids or something that's, that's kind of out there by themselves. So, that's certainly something to consider.
I, I guess also with that, my family in Chicago, with the on-street parking, it's really a difficult situation with the parking. Family members will move their car and another family will move into that spot, and it becomes kind of a territorial thing, you know? And so, I don't think we're there yet to have on-street parking, and certainly I want to agree with that.
And I don't think we're, so I guess specifically to that, because you've kind of mentioned the residential, the parking overnight, I, I don't think that's the direction of where this comprehensive plan is going. More or less looking at, you know, your daytime commercial uses, your, your shared parking in that sense, not necessarily allowing all residential to, to park on-street throughout, throughout the night.
And I, I, I guess too, when you look at anything over a duplex in a residential area, to me is, is starting to push it, you know? There's some, I have the oldest district in the city, the oldest housing district in the city, and we have some threeplexes, triplexes, fiveplexes, and it really creates a, a very congested look for the community, and then you don't have a lot of care about how the property is managed because there's so many people living on that one small lot. And these were all, and I appreciate the mayor's neighborhood, strong neighborhoods program to help reduce some of that. So, and we look at the, the sins of past. When somebody puts an eightplex or a fourplex in a neighborhood, it just, it just doesn't work. The parking issues are just horrendous, and so I think we have to be sensitive to, to a lot of neighborhoods which, which what we would, the mixed use we would be putting in there. Thanks, Sam.
So, just, just to comment on that point, Sam and I have gotten a lot of promotional materials from the town of Greenville. And the town of Greenville is actually promoting small lot development and accessory dwelling units. We had a long discussion in plan commission that we didn't think accessory dwelling units were right for Manashe because of some of the points that you're making with these becoming rental properties and the lack of care. Once, once you get that in a neighborhood, it creates problems. So, we did look at some of those trends that are going on right here in the Fox Cities and decide they're not right for Manashe, and wanting to preserve some of those single-family neighborhoods, but also to allow some flexibility to have some of those neighborhood gathering points and ability to make our existing 50-foot lots conforming again, because that's how they were developed to start out with. So, we did try to look at the history here as well as what others are doing. And we did take some of it, and we left some of it behind because we didn't think it did work well for us. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'll say that I agree with Alderman Taylor on this idea of mixed-use neighborhood and transitional areas. He's, I think he's right when he says that it starts out with good intentions and then it goes sideways. And I think that we have seen fine examples of that over the last few years, from storage units on Milwaukee Street to trailer storage on Washington Street to other things that have gone sideways. And I, ours, our zoning ordinances right now are pretty squishy through the special permitting process. Almost anything is allowed, you can find a way to make it work if you really want to. And zoning really is the key to demonstrating how we want our community to grow and what we want it to look like in 10, in 20 years. And so, broadening our zoning policies, I, I don't think that's the- policies, I, I don't think that's the answer to that question either. And frankly, I can honestly say that I, I don't understand everything about zoning. It's a, it's a complicated thing. And I'm, I'm willing to say that there's probably some education that can occur right here with the council about zoning and how it can be used and why we have it. In regards to the, to the plan that is presented today, I jotted down a few things, and I'm going to start at the top of the plan, where the demographic data is presented on page five. This is literally a snapshot of one day or one year in Manassia. And when we want to get a really clear picture of our community, I think it's important to examine trends over time. So how does this data compare to the last time a comprehensive plan was done, or the last time a census was taken, so that we can track the trends in our community and then use that information to develop plans for the future? Moving to page 11. I think this is under transportation. I had some questions about the action items. Let's see, we're, I'm under mobility and transportation goal number three. And under actions, there's reference to EV charging stations that would be developed on city-owned lots. Buildings and parks were appropriate and economically feasible. The EV charging station should be powered by renewable energy. So I'm curious about the conversation behind this, whether these charging stations would be free for use, or if there is a charge associated with those. So that's my first question.
So typically, the trend with these is that they are credit card driven, so there would be a fee with those.
Okay. And then is it possible to also work with local businesses and developers to either encourage or incentivize this with their properties? There might be business owners who want to add this sort of infrastructure to their business, whether it's for employees, for customers. And so can we also work with those types of people to integrate this technology into the city?
Yes.
And is that something that can be added to the plan spelled out a little more clearly? Or is it not part of the plan, but something that's, you know, on, in our minds as we move ahead?
I don't know if Sam's had this discussion, but I had this discussion with the chair of the Utility Commission regarding EV stations. And it is something in our budget for next year to begin exploring how Manassia Utilities could be involved in developing some sort of a citywide plan for that, as the technology gets a little bit more standardized.
Okay. My, my thought is that Manassia can be a real leader in this area, and that I, I hope that any plan can be well thought out and moved through, not moved through quickly, but developed in a, in a timeframe that is, that makes us still eligible for a lot of federal dollars that could be coming down the pike. I don't want us to be so behind the eight ball that we miss opportunities as they're coming quickly. So that, that's top of mind for me on that issue. Page 16 and 17, this is on land use. Goal number two, something about establishing neighborhoods, balanced neighborhoods throughout the city. There's a reference to, I think we briefly touched on this, consider reducing parking or doing away with parking minimums to reduce amount of impervious surface. And this has to do with parking lots, basically parking stalls that are required for certain developments. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. And I, I am a proponent. I'm supportive of reducing impervious surface to the extent possible. And can that also be accomplished by, let's see, I can't always read what I wrote here, by also including things like rain gardens, rain barrels, biofiltration systems on properties, and any other green infrastructure?
Yeah, I'm not sure I follow that question.
It's related to reducing impervious surfaces throughout the city. So we don't, we require concrete driveways. We require parking lots to be paved. And, and I think that we could probably improve our landscaping requirements so that that surface water stays on-site instead of flowing off somewhere else.
So that, that is required for any development now through the DNR and state statute requirements for, you know, any redevelopment that, that touches more than 20,000 square feet of surface, that, that's when that comes into play and is triggered. So I, I think that would be covered already unless, Mayor, did you feel otherwise?
I think what-
Yeah, that's, those are city, those are city properties. Yeah. And, and I understand that we're doing it. I'm saying, can we do more? Because we know that stormwater is a big issue here in Manassia. And so the more that we keep on-site and the less that flows into our rivers will help us and the lake in the long run. So doing more-
So I think what this is really talking about is, do we need a parking lot with 300 stalls at a grocery store? Or can we get by, or, or does the developer think that they really only need 200, but our code says they need 300? That's what this is really dealing with, letting the developer determine the amount of parking spaces they reasonably would want or need for their development.
Yes. And I'm, I'm considering more than just parking lots and thinking about more impervious surfaces that are in the city.
Sure. But that's what this was dealing with. Do we, do we need 300 spots, or is 250 sufficient for the use?
Yes.
Right now, we're, we're creating, everything is being equal.
And I really do not think you would want to increase the stormwater requirements. It is difficult for every single development to come in to meet the current standards set by, set by the DNR. And you would put a huge hindrance on future development and a huge financial cost and burden on that as well.
We could also develop programs to entice and encourage homeowners and other property owners in the city to engage in keeping water on their private property as well.
Potentially, yes.
And you briefly mentioned the community survey, and we heard comments about participation in the other sessions that were held with the public. For example, the community survey was completed by 136 people, which is less than 10% of our population. So it's a really small sample and not, not necessarily representative of the overall community. So how do we factor that into the plan going forward? The fact that public participation was low and based on the census data may not be representative of the community.
Again, we, you, you attempt to get public participation through, you know, sharing surveys, through, you know, sending out emails. It, public participation is certainly a very difficult item. So I'm not sure if you, if you would look at postponing this to, and hold another public hearing, or be open to, to taking suggestions on that. And again, I think that's why we looked at having an ad hoc committee meeting that had certain different backgrounds that, that also could add to those conversations as well and somewhat be a spokesperson for a collective group of people, as, if you will, as well.
And, and I'm not, this is supposed to last for 20 years, did you say?
It, a comprehensive plan, yeah, is a 20-year plan, but should be updated every 10 years.
Okay. So from, say this is accepted this evening, and based on the small sample size of thoughts and opinions from the community, how do we take that into account as if for the next 10 years, as decisions are made? That, you know, this is what they said one day, but that was also a really small sample.
I, I think you, you hit that exactly on the head. You know, you can't read one, one comment on a survey and assume that, that is, is iron to move forward with. You know, my, my experience in public government is when you don't hear from people, you're usually doing well. It's those, you know, those projects that greatly affect the neighborhood or that you're not doing well is when you typically get a plethora of people coming to, to share their concerns. So, and maybe that's, hats off to the council here, that, you know, the direction, the development, the projects that, you know, have been working on, the trails, is, has been well taken. I, I don't know.
Okay. And lastly, in plans past, there has been recognition of the ad hoc committee members who participated in the process?
Yes, we did. So on the front cover, that, that needs to be added.
Thank you.
I know you're, so with MSA as well as obviously the City of Manassia, you know, losing Joe Stevenson, MSA through this process also lost their lead planner. So Jason and I are picking up, picking up where those two individuals left off. So yes, that, I think that was shared previously. That will get added.
Thank you. And thank you to them for their time and contribution to their community. It's much appreciated.
Alderman Savinick?
Let's not forget that this is, this is only a small amendment to the comprehensive plan. I'd agree with you with public participation if this was the full plan. It's not. It's a small part of it, and it's an ongoing process, especially as Sam just noted, we're taking other parts of it into next year. So maybe people weren't interested in these particular parts, but might be in other parts of it. So anyways, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion for 0921, the adoption of this ordinance for the comprehensive plan updates introduced by the mayor.
So motion is second, and you can pick who got the second? Discussion, Alderman Taylor?
Just in closing, you know, being up here since the 90s, sometimes we use the plan for us. Sometimes we use it as a weapon against the council. Sometimes we use it as a tool not to have certain businesses. And, and sometimes it helps us bend the rules for other businesses. So it's, it's not written in stone. And, but sometimes it is, it's u, it's used that way. A good, just another good example of, of, of something, it was a garage, my grandfather used to be on the Board of Review for many years. And across from him, there was a garage. And the owner of another business came to him and said, you know, I want this little hobby garage for my son and I, and this is what we're going to be doing. And just, you know, I sold my business. I'm going to some, retire for a while till I reestablish myself. And just a good place for me and the kids to have some hobbies. Well, that went away. The next guy came with a, with a wrecker and said, I need a, I'm going to run a wrecker, and then I need a place to put, put the cars in when I tow them before they're released. And then after he left, it became a body shop, and it's known as 540 Broad Street. So this is, this is how things happen. But a success story for us, Habitat, other cities haven't caught up to Manassia. We have a, a garage ordinance for them. We have a hard surface for the driveways. That's just a total success story for Manassia. So it can be used many different ways. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, could you verify again which chapters will be updated next year?
That will still be discussed. We will be working on a housing study in probably quarter one of next year. So at bare minimum, the housing element. But the other elements will continue to be discussed. And, and we can bring that forward, for discussion if you'd like.
Okay, perhaps at the budget process?
Or perhaps into later in the year. But yes, later in the year, next year, we could certainly discuss those elements about what fits, what, what is needed at this exact time.
And would those reviews of chapters include an ad hoc committee and public engagement like these did?
Yeah, so any amendment to the comprehensive plan, we would look to, to adding public participation. So public participation isn't meant, isn't required for just these two elements. It is required for any type of comprehensive plan amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment on the, the numbers that we keep speaking about, that turnout for these surveys. I think this was a pretty high turnout compared to when we did Jefferson Park, or we did the Water Street corridor, the City Vision Plan. This was a fairly substantial number compared to those where we get 50 to 60 people. And I think this shows, even though they're concentrated areas that we're targeting, this shows a broader area. So I think we had a better response than we're giving ourselves the credit for.
Seeing no further comments, if we could have a roll call vote, please. I didn't realize that you stepped out. I'm sorry. I'm just waiting.
Motion carries eight, zero.
So the final item is public comments on any matter that was on the agenda?
Sandra Dable-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. This is pretty much why my husband tells me it's a waste of time to come to these meetings. I should probably start listening to him. First of all, I, comprehensive plan, just a comment on a few of the things that were brought up. I appreciate Alderman Taylor and Alderman Nichols' questions. They asked very good questions and asked for clarification. Regarding the public participation, I think it was terrible public participation primarily because the city website never even acknowledged that this, that there were these things going on. It was not until it came to the survey that the mayor put it on his Facebook page. That was the only notification. As the council had approved the procedure, the consultant said things would be put in the mailing of the billings. That never occurred. It was not on the website. It was not on the media, nothing. So to assume that the people knew about it, it was only those that are intimately involved, either with the city itself or a member of the council told them. Looking back six years ago, at their meeting, they had attendees that represented the city, the DNR, the Park and Rec Board, the Manasha Historical Society Landmarks Commission, Hecarad, wetland reserve, Winnebago and Calumet County, private nonprofit interest groups, UW Extension, UW Fox Valley, East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning, neighboring municipalities and residents. That was just on some of their feedback. Also, if you look at feedback, public comments from 10 years ago, pretty much mirror the public comments from today with land use, with housing next to industrial, housing next to commercial, industrial on the waterfront and the same lack of code enforcement. Those are the things that people are concerned about. They're concerned about their personal property. When it comes to, where do I begin? When it comes to Sam's comments regarding the mixed-use neighborhood, he's making a rosy picture that you're going to have a insurance agent move in one of these buildings. No. What you have is the vacant five o'clock somewhere bar, it's been vacant for two, three years now, blighted. No one's ever going to run, move in there. Plus, the building itself is too small for a legal conforming commercial property. You're looking at standings. We would still have Juanzer'skis and the bar next to it had the Boys and Girls Club not come along. So these are areas that are going to sit there. And unless the existing has now been wiped away, those spot-zoned areas were removed. They're now back into play. Thank you very much. Regarding the trail on Broad Street, Sam mentioned people do the path of least resistance. That path of least resistance at the Plan Commission level, when it came to Jimmy John's, the people living on Broad Street are not allowed when the bridge goes through. Even today, we cannot take a left to go over the, to go into Nina. But four out of five cars do because it's the path of least resistance when it's a no left turn. They go straight even though it's a, you're not supposed to go straight. When the median goes in, what's going to happen? According to that, you're going to have a trail there so the bikes can go straight, but the cars can't. You're such hypocrites. And as Alderman Taylor mentioned, it's pretty much so wishy-washy that it's going to depend on what community development wants to see there, who they're going to allow to do what. Regarding parking, the plan specifically says that to loosen or eliminate mandatory parking for new development. There's already been talk of the former bond to building, is that one for, not, on the end of the, of Main Street, that their parking lot could become future development. So then, where do the residents of these new apartments park? If you end up putting a building on that parking lot on the street? Regarding Greenville, Greenville was heavily, heavily campaigned by builders and realtors to loosen the building code so that they could make money in Greenville. That's what that came down to. It wasn't that Greenville's grand vision, Greenville growing, growing community. And developers wanted to make more money, builders wanted to make more money on smaller lots. That's what it came down to. What we're doing here is we've, we're recontinuing 100 years ago, just like the telephone poles. We Energy spent $40 million relocating overground lines throughout urban areas or rural areas. And we keep putting telephone poles up. Regarding the electric cars, there was an article in the paper, I'll wrap it up. You may have missed it. Someone asked the question, wasn't me, but it sure seemed obvious. Hecarad Festival Food, right here in Manasha, have an electric charging station. Other businesses that want to promote it have electric charging stations. In Biden's transportation bill, he has money for municipalities to provide electric charging stations, so this better not show up in the budget. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the gallery, do we have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.